Good evening. It is April 14th, 2025 at 7:01 PM. My name is Nick Sturgeon, President of the Speedway Council, and I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will begin tonight by introductions. And to my far right is Town Manager Grant Kleinheinz.
Good evening. Good evening.
Next to him, Counselor Sarah Gardner.
Good evening.
Next to her is Counselor Sean Hallar.
Good evening.
To our far, or to my far left is Town Attorney Ted Melting.
Good evening.
Next to him is Town Clerk Treasurer Philip Faust.
Good evening.
Next to him is Counselor Vince Noblet.
Good evening.
And to my immediate left is Council Vice President Jason Delisle.
Good evening.
We'll make a note, we do have a slight reorder in the agenda. We will be doing, after the last memorandum on point five, we'll be moving to items 15 and 16, and then picking the order back up from there. So just wanted to make that note. And we will now move on to item two, minutes, approval of minutes of the March 10th, 2025 meeting.
I'll make a motion for the approval of minutes of the March 10th, 2025 meeting.
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions or changes? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving minutes of the March 10th, 2025 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes 5-0. Next is memorandum and of administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on March 10th, 2025.
I'll make a motion that we approve of the memorandum of administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on March 10th, 2025.
Second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote for approval of memorandum of administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on March 10th, 2025. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes 5-0. Item four, minutes, approval of minutes for the April 2nd, 2025 special session meeting.
I'll make a motion for the approval of minutes of the Speedway Town Council meeting on April 2nd.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the April 2nd, 2025 special session meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes 5-0. Item five, memorandum, approval of memorandum of administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on April 2nd, 2025. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion for the approval of memorandum of administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on April 2nd, 2025.
Second.
All right, any comments, questions, discussion?
I try to avoid using that word, memorandum, because I never say it right.
All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving memorandum of administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on April 2nd, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes 5-0. All right, we will move on to, down the list, to the approval of insurance claim release. Philip?
Thank you. I am requesting that you approve the full release of all claims with indemnity for a payment in amount of $443.84 that would come from Progressive Palo Verde Insurance Company to the town for an accident in which a vehicle hit one of our street signs on December 6th, 2023. This is at the intersection of 25th and Shaw, so kind of right across from the Coca-Cola Bottling Company, so happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of insurance claim release.
Second.
Any comments, questions for Philip? All right.
Sorry, will you, will you just explain this briefly?
Sure. So the insurance company is offering us this payment, and then in return for it, we're releasing them for future claims for the same accident. So we're agreeing that this settles the whole matter between us and these parties. So it actually, our estimate is that it costs us a little bit more than double this to replace the side. Their insurance policy is capped at $25,000 worth of damages that they will pay out for this type of claim. Not only did they hit the sign, but they hit a utility pole. There was also damage to their vehicle, so there's not enough money from the insurance claim to go around to everybody to pay in full, so they are offering a prorata settlement to us.
You feel good with the amount of money we received for this?
I mean, I'd like to receive the full amount, but for us to pursue it further would probably not be worth the amount we'd expend in trying to pursue it.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions, discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving of insurance claim release as presented by our Clerk Treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes 5-0. Moving on to approval of claims and utility adjustments. Philip?
Thank you. This evening I have just claims requests for you, although, don't worry, I will have utility adjustments for you in the future. This is for the dates spanning March 29th, 2025 through April 29th, 2025. It's six pages, and it's in the amount of $1,582,545.61. Since we had that special session, there isn't much of payroll on here, so that's why there's a fairly short list. Kind of items that might jump out at you would be that we have one of the trucks that we had ordered has come in from Hair Chevrolet. There's a substantial payment to Leopardo Energy for the energy savings project, as they're making progress on that. And then you will see some of our regular insurance items on there as well.
I'll make a motion that we approve the claims as presented by the town's Clerk Treasurer.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Okay, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving claims and utility adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes 5-0. Okay, moving back up to our list, item six, presentation of Resident Academy graduates. Grant?
Thank you. So as you know, this is our annual Resident Academy. We seek out those who want to be involved in it near the end of the year, first of the year. The class then starts, and this year it started at the end of January, which was about a week earlier than normal. I think we found that by the end of March and April, people have other things going on, and it's harder to get people to attend. So we had 22 people submitted and started the class. 14 of those 22 graduated. What does it require to graduate? It's pretty easy, really. Attendance at four out of five, or 80%, so a B, right? So everyone out here is A work.
We think you're A work.
Or A work. But they could be A work. Some of them are A work, yes, 100%. I'm just joking. So the reason we do this, there's a couple of reasons why we do it. One, to inform. We're trying to inform our residents about where our dollars are spent, how the different departments operate. We go through all of the different departments, showing projects, facilities, those department heads are involved, so it's to inform. The second is to, in many ways, create advocates. I've seen it play out over the past couple of years. This is our third session. We've had folks that have got on Facebook and said, hey, that's not really the way it works, and I'm telling you, that's worth every, every moment we had to spend on these things. It's, it's very valuable to have people that are informed saying, hey, that's not really the way it works. The third thing is ultimately leadership development. We're not trying to develop President of the United States, but potentially town counselors, people who can serve on boards and commissions, because I've always felt a better informed person is more valuable to any organization, and now all of these 14 folks better understand the government. So they're ready and willing, I think, to serve, and that's something the council can look at as we appoint boards and commissions in the fall. So without further ado, and Cheryl's going to come up and take a picture once we get everybody, and then I'm going to invite the council to come down momentarily. I'm just going to go down the list. Lisa Guy.
Should we hold our applause?
Yeah, let's hold it. If you want to just stand up here, you're going to be right at the front. Anthony Ragnon. Thank you so much. William Hooper. Travis Warren.
Thank you.
Jason Paul Marshall. William Rickett. Shelley Vernon. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dana Hamilton. Thank you. Sam Garrett. Thank you so much. Sam Hunt, or Samuel Hunt, I apologize.
Sam.
Sam. You go by Sam. Leah Foster. Thank you. Jeffrey G. Hammer. Thank you so much. And John Hurigley, who's not here, Circus Icispay, Issicpay, I'm sorry. I know that, we've talked so many times.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So we present to the council the 2025 graduates for the Resident Academy, so let's welcome them. I will step out. Cheryl's going to do some great pictures. Action shots are appreciated.
Yeah, come together quite a bit more. Maybe turn a little bit sideways to get more, yeah.
Is this good, Cheryl?
I'm going to see. Podium's really bad, because I'm really short.
It's okay if the podium's in.
Actually, this is okay.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Ready? Can you step in just a little bit?
Just give it to a half.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, very much appreciated. Thank you. And please.
Yeah, I was going to sit, but to be clear, I was sitting behind them. It would be weird.
So we will. Hey, no one will judge you. Yeah, we will reach out to the four individuals who couldn't make it tonight. We will make sure they get their certificate. We probably need to put that there's no monetary value to this certificate. Doesn't earn you anything other than, yeah, my sig, yeah, that's probably bad. So, thank you. We will continue doing this program. We have talked internally that as the numbers maybe start to dwindle, maybe we do it every other year, but I think we're still getting that 20 to 25 residents who are interested, and I think it's worth the time and effort that we do. So, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. I think I've heard some really good comments about the program from those that have gone through it, so to your point, I think having that just creates an advocate, just that informed citizen is never a bad thing. So thank you to you and all the staff that put the time and energy into making it happen. Any other comments for Grant or?
Yeah, I think it's great because of that we need extra help down there at the wastewater plant. It's a great environment.
Well, we didn't, we didn't teach them how to be operators. It's the next class. It's the next phase of the training.
All right, moving on to item seven, special event request for Rockin' on Main. Cheryl?
Good evening, council. Let's see. So Rocket on Main is our annual event we have every year, always on Carb Day, so this year it's May 23rd, Friday. It will run from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. It will include bands. Melon Cougar will start us off, and then we'll wrap up the night with Clayton Anderson. Clayton's been around for a couple of years with this. We'll also feature the Kid Zone, which is 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock, inflatable bounce houses, giant slide, things of that nature. We currently have over 40 artists, crafters, and merchandise vendors, and that, we're still adding to that. A local artist is actually helping me with that this year to coordinate some of it. He met with me last year and sees potential of this growing, so we're trying a little bit more of that this year. We also have a car collection, a display of vintage cars and past pace cars. Food and beverage, Dawson's on Main will provide our one adult beverage stand that will be within the vent area. With Dora now in place, any participating Dora business on Main Street, they can go in and get their beverages and walk out. So we felt like sticking with just one beverage, adult beverage stand was, was okay. It so encourages people to go into the different businesses, but still having something out there will eliminate some of the weight. Some of our Main Street businesses are participating with their food. Barbecue and Bourbon will have a stand separate from the restaurant, as will Big Woods Fun Days, setting up a tent in addition to their storefront, and then we'll have maybe four other food trucks available to help offset some of the crowd. Performance Racing Industry, PRI, is a participant this year. They're going to open their doors and encourage people to come in for tours. They'll have their racing simulators set up, some different engagement activities going on, and they'll also have their restrooms available for additional public restrooms. Attendance is always weather-based. The last couple of years, we've seen between 7,000 and 10,000 people, hoping that continues, but we never know, you know, it's on rain or shine, providing it's safe. Parking, typically parking is done in the, in the neighboring neighborhoods on the streets there, but we also have a lot across from IMS east of the Speedway gas station that will be available for free, free public parking. We'll have a digital sign inviting guests to park there. What I'm requesting from council tonight is to the approval of closing Main Street from 13th Street to 16th Street, which is where the festival takes place. We will close that down at 1:00. We always wait until after a lot of the noontime rush from the businesses. But on May 23rd, close beginning at 1:00, and then also close the small section of 14th Street from Main Street just to the alley. One, we utilize the Plaza Park right there, so it's a little bit safer to have that closed, and we are going to try to have the Kid Zone there this year. Let's see. We have, regarding all of this, I did hold a planning meeting on April 8th that included the police, the fire, streets, grant, parks, just to talk through some of the logistics and try to head off any problems that we anticipated. This is kind of like everyone on board, everyone participates. Again, the event is sponsored, paid for, 100% sponsorship from corporate and business sponsors. A little bit down this year, but we should still be okay. And then I always seek help from not-for-profits for some of the items on hand during the day. One extra thing that we're doing this year is I've never charged for vendors or merchandise people to set up a stand, which a lot of festivals do, but it's not a money-making thing. It's a community event, so I've never charged for it, but this year we've given the vendors the opportunity to give back if they want to, 10% of their sales, and then we'll turn around and donate that to a local not-for-profit. So that's really the biggest difference, but I'm here to ask permission or approval to close the streets as needed. Any questions?
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the closure of Main Street from 13th Street to 16th Street beginning at 1:00 PM on May 23rd, as well as 14th Street from Main to the alley between the Spark and the Plaza Park, as presented.
Second.
All right, any comments, questions for Cheryl?
Cheryl, I was thinking, like, how do you get feedback for such a large event like this? I mean, there's so many people, probably more from residents, do you get feedback? Not, I don't know, like, how does that?
Yes and no. Feedback is typically just through Facebook. They don't do any kind of formal, social feedback from the residents that are attending. Word of mouth is huge.
Yeah.
For the participants and for Main Street businesses, after the event, I do send out a post survey saying, you know, what worked well, what didn't work well, what can I do differently? Was it beneficial to you? What challenges did you have? And then I summarize that, and I do pull it out each year when we go to start planning to take some of the things we can change, some of the things we can't. The biggest thing, our generators are so loud. There's nothing, there's not a lot I can do about that. It's, it's hard. There's not much I can do about it, or we don't have people involved that have generators. So this year, that's, we change it every year to try to find a, a better solution. So this year, we're going to have them all located in one end of the street, and we'll see if that works better.
Yeah. Yeah. No, it's always such a great event, and just praying for no rain.
I know.
Last year was so wonky, so hopefully it's a fun day.
But you know, even after the two storms last year, we still had a huge crowd. I was surprised, so.
Yeah, everyone wants to be on Main Street that day.
They do.
You know, so it's a great event.
I got a question for you. How many people contributed, businesses contributed to the event?
Regarding sponsorships?
Sponsorships.
I don't have a number. We're probably at 10 or 12 right now. I typically go to large, our large corporate businesses, such as IMS, Waste Management, Allison, Lindy, those first for the sponsorships. And then just last week, I sent a note out to all of the Speedway businesses. If you're a small business, it's harder for, I think, for you probably to contribute something, but I do have a handful of small businesses that, that give. Total amounts, the last couple of years, I've run in about 25,000. This year, I'm down to about 22, so not a huge difference, but a little bit.
Oh, that's great. That's fantastic that they are participating and making sure, from the cost standpoint, of making this a really good event year to year.
Yeah.
And that shows.
Yeah, thank you. We have one vendor that I just received a request to participate, participate today. He's from Miami, Florida, so I'm not sure exactly how that happened, and I'm hoping he's here for other things other than this one event. That's a lot of pressure, but I do have details, so we'll find out.
All right, any other comments or questions?
No, just thank you so much for all of your work on this. I know, I know it's a lot, but this is going to be such a fun event, and everybody's so excited to, to see everybody. Hopefully, again, great weather, and fingers crossed, and all go off without a hitch.
And maybe we'll see you and Grant back on Fox 59 again this year.
Or any of the council that wants to come along, or?
Yeah, you're always welcome to jump in for those interviews.
All right, well, thank you, Cheryl. Appreciate it.
Cheryl loves to get me on those kind of things. She knows I love it so much.
Well, not yet. It's a, with that.
Oh, I think I'm the next speaker, so I was just sticking around.
Well, yeah, okay, well, we'll, we'll just stay up there, and then if there's no other comments, questions, or discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving Cheryl's special event request for Rockin' on Main with the road closures of Main Street, 13th to 16th Street, beginning at 1:00 on May 23rd, as well as closing 14th Street from Main to the alley between the Spark and Plaza Park, Kid Zone location. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes 5-0. And then we will go ahead and move on to the next item.
So I'm rolling out, last year we started, I rolled out the program Movie on Main, holding movies once a month at the Plaza Park on Main Street. In April, we're, we're starting those back up again, barring nice weather, which could change the day up. Two of my sponsors for this event is PRI, Performance Racing Industry, and Bell Helmets. They're partnering together to each, together to host or sponsor a movie on two different months. The one that they're hosting or sponsoring on May 16th, they're going to also hold a PRI open house, along with celebrating Bell Helmet's 70th year anniversary. That takes place during the day, but then they're going to wrap it up at 6:30 and transition everyone over to the Plaza and show Gran Turismo as the movie for the night. They have, the reason I'm before council, they have requested to use four parking spots in front of PRI. They have a vintage car of some sort that they want to position there to have the lights going or to bring attention from the Plaza movie to their facility for people to go back and forth, or to know that they're involved with it. So I'm asking if we can, that day, close off four parking spots. It is on a Friday, it is, or, yeah, it is on a Friday, it is during May, so I don't know if, don't think four spots is going to cause a real hardship, but anyway, we are requesting to close. There's four spots that are kind of allocated right together, so it should, should not create an issue.
All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the request for the 16th movie night, specifically the four parking spots to be closed off that day.
Yeah, a second? Any comments or questions? I think the only comment, I just want to clarify, what time are the spaces going to be closed for?
I don't know yet. So I have indicated all day on here, because I think we're still working through that. The event, their event is from 11:00 o'clock to 1:00, they're doing a luncheon, and then their open house, their engagement things are later that day, from 5:00 to 6:30. I, I'm thinking they want to leave it there all day and then continue it during Movie on Main, which is why I put 8:00.
All right, so from starting at 8?
But most likely all day.
It's all day on the, okay, I just want to make sure, have a clarification on the timeframe.
Cheryl, my only question was, like, it, I know, like, Be Aaron is a sponsor of it, just so that, like, the other businesses are aware, because I was just thinking, like, would that take away if parking's already going to be a little crazy? Do they know this event is happening, or are they aware?
So I don't typically communicate any of this until once council approves it.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's going back saying, we're doing this, oh, wait, we're not doing this.
Never mind. Yeah.
Yes, and actually, with every event that we do, if, if, when the street is closed, even though I've still put a mass communication out there, any businesses that it affects their employees to get in and out, or their customers, they receive an individual notice, and this one will be the, the same way. So, yes, they will be notified that those parking spots will be taken for the day.
Okay. Yeah, that was just the one thing I was thinking in for them.
Will the street department put something out to close them out at?
I haven't asked them yet, but yes, I think they will if I ask nicely.
You have to ask nicely, Cheryl.
I'll struggle with that. My best.
Any other comments or questions? All right, with that, I will call for a vote. All those in favor for the request for the May 16th Street movie night on Main, closing those four parking spots in front of PRI all day, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
And I will be John Disney this evening, so.
All right, so, item nine, request from the Speedway Lions Club to utilize the municipal center parking lot for race parking. Grant?
Yes, so annually, as part of the Indianapolis 500, we have allowed the Lions Club, which is our largest.
is our largest sponsor of all different types of town events and community events, to park the municipal center. We now have a big parking lot. So we allow them to park that on race day. I think that lot is filled by 8:00 a.m., 7:00, 7:30, 8:00 a.m. It's done. We do not allow them to park the back, because as you heard tonight, if we have some issue at the track, that's where all the police command incident people will come, so we've got to keep that backside open. But they then keep those funds, and they donate those to various community groups. So annually, we have asked the council to approve this request from them. They'll have insurance indemnifying us and naming us as an additional insured, that kind of thing. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the use of the north lot for the Speedway Lions Club. Utilize the municipal center as a parking facility for that day.
The only addition to that would be that east side as well.
Yeah, north and east.
Yeah, north and east, yeah.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions for Grant? I will just say, you know, the Lions Club does a lot for the town. I think this is the least we can do to show support for, for the club.
I think that we also need to make sure that Jeff Hammer will be parking that facility at 6:00 in the morning, since he lives right across the street. And we can go from there. Good.
I think that's club business.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? All right. With that, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the request from the Speedway Lions Club to utilize the municipal center parking lot for race parking, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, 5-0. Item 10, approval of the Speedway Economic Development Director Employment Agreement. Grant?
Yes, thank you. So this evening, we have before you, you will not be a signatory to this agreement, but I wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to review it and approve it. We have done that in the past. This is our employment agreement with our new Economic Development Director. His name is Kyle Markley. He is in the audience this evening, on the very back row. He is a Speedway resident. I won't give his address out. He does live in Speedway, grew up in the area, really has been a good find for us. I think we're all very excited for what he will potentially bring to the, to the position. So the agreement outlines, it is a three-year agreement commencing on April 23rd. That will be his first day of employment. That's next Wednesday, or nine days away, not that I'm counting. Annual salary will be $90,000 per year. He does have a cell phone allowance, similar to every other town employee, three weeks of paid vacation, as well as PTO based on the Personnel Policy Manual. There is a severance agreement, sections on termination, all of that. The agreement has included his address on it, but we did not include that, because I don't think that's appropriate at this point. But I'll answer any questions that you might have. Once again, you're not signing this this evening, you're just approving it.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion, and let me find the line item here. 10, thank you. I'll make a motion for the approval of the Speedway Economic Development Director Employment Agreement.
I'll second it.
Comments, questions for Grant?
I'll just say, since Kyle's in the audience, just really appreciate, you know, you showing interest in this, looking forward to working with you. Yeah, happy you're here.
Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Speedway Economic Development Director Employment Agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, 5-0. Congratulations.
So once again, first day will be the 23rd. We do have a redevelopment commission on Monday evening. They will be approving the agreement as well, and then Jennifer Miller, as the president, will be the signatory. So once that's all signed, it has been signed by Kyle, we'll get that back to him, do everything we need to do with it, and then he'll start on Wednesday.
All right.
I have a list.
All right. Moving on, Item 11, approval of quote from Cooley Contracting for the installation of an insertion valve for Town Water Main at the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. Grant?
Yeah. So this is a very interesting one. This year, IMS discovered that they had a 19, I think it's 1921, fire hydrant that probably has not operated in a long, long time, and they are wanting to replace that. Once they started looking into that, we found out that the Town Water Main that went to it, which supplies it, runs onto their property, it's owned by us. It doesn't have a check valve, anything on it, so they are not going to be able to replace that hydrant, and you should never not have a valve on something like that, particularly a high-flow situation like that for fire. So we discussed it with the water department. We, we got a quote from Cooley. They're working with Cooley as well, because they have a portion that they're paying, not of this. They have a separate bill. This is not an inexpensive project. Our total will be $33,492, and includes everything from the line, which will be an eight-inch line, a couple of vaults, the VAC truck to be out there and suck out the trench. They'll have to dig a trench for a good distance. We're recommending approval of this, so that they can get it scheduled, and they would like to get it done, I think, as soon as possible. I'm not sure they're going to try to get it done by the race, but they do want to get it done as soon as possible. So I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Grant, where, where is it?
Well.
Is it right there in front of the administration?
I don't have the address. It is, I believe it's off of Georgetown Road, but I'm not really sure exactly where. I don't have a map or.
So it's inside, it's inside the property.
The hydrant is definitely on their property. That's why they're paying for the hydrant and the line that goes to the hydrant, once it gets out of the town.
And that's a result of when we closed Georgetown Road, then it became their property.
I'm not really sure about that. I think the reality is, we didn't know about this, or, we would have probably fixed this 25, 30 years ago.
Yeah.
So. Could just interject, order for a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Cooley Contracting for the installation of an insertion valve for the Town Water Main at the Indianapolis Motor Speedway.
I'll second it.
All right. Any other discussion? And is coming from the water fund?
Yeah. And it wasn't specifically budgeted for, but there are dollars in that for these types of projects. Replacement of hydrants, replacement of mains, that kind of thing.
So when we, once we do this, will there be continuous, you think?
No.
I mean, this feels weird, like you said.
Yeah, because it's on their property. It's a very weird situation. Probably should have been fixed 50, 60 years ago, but we will discuss with them, probably having them adopt that line, and us stopping it at the right-of-way, but we haven't gotten that far. Yeah.
We have a few other hydrants on the property also.
Yeah.
We have access to them.
Yeah.
And this will bring us up to code on everything?
Yeah, and make it so the hydrant is actually functioning.
Any other comments?
Functioning properly, I should say.
All right. Hearing no other discussion, I will call for a vote for all, all those in favor of approving the quote from Cooley Contracting for the installation of an insertion valve for the Town Water Main at the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, 5-0. Moving on to Item 12, approval of proposal from RQAW for the digitalization of hard cop, that hard copy plant and sewer as build plant documents.
That's a tongue twister.
That's a tongue twister. I tripped you up on that one.
Yeah, you did.
So as RQAW is doing the design of our ongoing agreed order project, one of the things that became evident was, a lot of our plans are not digital. They're harder to search and reference. They're just hard copies. That's something that can ultimately be burned up. We wanted to digitize those, so we asked them specifically, because they are aware of all those plans. They've been working with them for months and months. They gave us a not-to-exceed figure of 10,000. I actually believe it's going to be less than that, but they will digitize those. They'll scan the hard copies, convert those to AutoCAD, so that we can draw on them and make notes as needed, and they'll deliver all those files to us, and they'll be owned by us. So we think this is a good deal. As they continue to look at those plans and work off of them, they'll just digitize them in turn. It'll probably be done by the end of the year. And the agreement is for me to sign, so if you could authorize me to sign that agreement, that would be great.
I'll make a motion for the approval of proposal from RQAW for the digitization of hard copy plant and sewer as built plan documents, and authorization for Grant to sign.
I'll second that.
Any comments, questions, discussion?
I have a quick question. So Grant, I see here, this is not to exceed $10,000, is that right?
Yes.
Do we have any estimate on what cost might be?
I think it's going to be in that 4,000 to 6,000 range.
Okay.
I think they gave us a little higher price, in case we find some other documents, or we decide they did such a good job. We have other plans that we potentially could have them look at. Water plans, other things, but I think it's going to be 5, 4,000 to $6,000.
Okay. Thank you.
I will say, because the, the risk of having the hard copies is, you know, fire, damage, whatever.
Water damage, fire.
But I also say, well, we'll mention, from a cyber perspective, that we back these up properly as well. Just make sure that, are they storing, having a backup of that, or?
I don't know. I don't have an answer to that. I think that's something we'll discuss with them. We probably need to get Exos involved, and, yeah.
Any other comments, questions, discussion?
Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the proposal from RQAW for the digitization of hard copy plant and sewer as build plan documents, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, 5-0. Item 13, approval of right-of-way purchase. Grant?
Yes. So this is the first of potentially seven right-of-way purchases that we will be doing over the next, hopefully, couple of months. As you know, this is in connection to the Crawfordsville Road Pedestrian Enhancement Project. The address for this property, which is owned by G A and P Resources, is 2222 Cunningham Road. We're buying a very simple sliver off of them for the amount of $2,500. That is what it appraised at, and what the damages came up to. They have agreed, they have signed, everything is a go. This will be our first of seven that we have secured. So we recommend approval. On the claims document that you already approved tonight, so it's a little bit out of order, is this check for this amount.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the right-of-way purchase.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? I will just say, we, we need it so we can do the project.
Yep.
Got all, all there is there.
Yeah, we wouldn't definitely be buying it if we didn't need it for the construction.
All right. Any other discussion, comments, or questions? All right. I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the right-of-way purchase, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, 5-0.
So one follow-up comment. Once the check is sent, the documents will be recorded by our right-of-way buyer. I don't think they've done that yet, as I'm looking at it, but it will be recorded, and that way, 25, 30 years from now, it won't, won't be an issue.
All right. And Item 14, Resolution Number 2025-07, Resolution of the Town Council of the Town and Speedway, authorizing the exercise of eminent domain authority. Grant?
So we do not take this lightly. I want to make that statement straight up. Eminent domain is the ability of a government to come in and say, your property is worth X. A court agrees with that, or assigns a value, and then we take that property typically for a construction project. The other six parcels that we have had discussions with in regards to this, the other five, I'm sorry, have been fairly responsive, and conversations have been going back and forth. This property owner, no matter what we have done to date, has been communicative with us at all. So the address for this, Eagle Creek Court Apartments, the address is 2148 Augusta Drive. Indianapolis is the actual physical address, because the, I think the corporate headquarters is just outside of Speedway. But this is authorizing us, doesn't mean that we will use this. It is authorizing us to use this to go back with them and say, what is the reason for you not communicating? They have a certain appraised value. We can then offer a little more than that, considering what our expenses with legal would be. The final straw would be us filing eminent domain. I don't know if you want to add anything to my explanation.
Sure, sure. Yeah. So we've already given them the uniform offer. They haven't responded within 30 days, so this kind of gives us another tool to use, in case we still get no response from them. The process is, we'd file a complaint, then they have up to 30 days to respond. If they do or don't respond, we can ask the court to appoint appraisers. They'll come back with a value, and if we like the value, we deposit money with the court, we get the property immediately. Then we can litigate a little bit over the actual cost of it, because they'll try to push it up or a little bit. But yeah, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
And the reason this is a, a little bit of a concern is, as you know, we bid the project. You approved it two meetings ago with Alco Incorporated out of Batesville to construct this project. We want to have this ready to go in June, the 1st of June, and the longer this takes, the, the more jeopardy that puts us in. We did bid this with the understanding that we did not have all the right-of-way. We made that very clear with the state, who gave us the grant funds, the MPO. But this will just put us that much further ahead, and hopefully, we won't have to use this.
Yeah, and I will, I will say that even if we file tomorrow, it would probably, probably be July, at the earliest, before a court gave us the order for the property. So if we don't hear back soon, it's one of those things we probably got to advance. And, look, anytime prior to the court order, we can still settle, we can still negotiate with them. That's still on the table.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for Resolution 2025-07, Resolution of the Town Council of Town and Speedway, authorizing the exercise of eminent domain authority.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion?
I've got one comment. Grant, is it 2025-07, or on the resolution, it reads 2025-06?
Sorry.
So it's like?
It's supposed to be 07. I think we just did not get the ordinance, or the resolution corrected.
Okay, that's fine.
We did on the agenda.
Okay.
Philip pointed that out, I think, a week ago, and it just, yeah, we, it slipped through the cracks.
So do we, obviously, you probably know, Grant, how large of an area are we talking?
Very small.
Okay. It's like we're taking the apartments.
No, no, oh, no. None of the property that we need takes any major improvements, right? It's all, a couple of them, it's like the driveway, but we, we have agreed, as part of the damages, to rebuild the driveway, or relocate it a little bit. This is a very small, fairly small taking. Or, or right-of-way piece. Yeah, we're not taking a building, or.
Right. Some of it's home.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions for Grant, or Ted? And I just, you know, we'll reiterate, this doesn't mean we're going to, it just gives us an extra option, because for the improvements that are needed at Crawfordsville Road, we've got to have the land. So hopefully, we can get them to respond, but I just want to make it clear that this is just giving us the, the best option for a very minimal piece of, of land.
I mean, I would think that we would take this resolution and send the, send it to them, saying, we have authorized the use. We would like to bring you to the table and, and hear your concerns and issues. hear your concerns and issues.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? Okay, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number 2025-07, resolution of the Town Council of the Town and Speedway authorizing the exercise of eminent domain authority, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you.
All right, we are skipping on to reports from our department supervisors. We'll start with Cheryl.
I would like just to encourage residents to be sure to be following our Facebook page and our website for all the information that's going, especially as we get closer to May. Tonight, I'm just going to share a couple of events, reminders of what's coming up. I mentioned movie on Main earlier, so we have one April 18th. It's Star Wars: The Force Awakens. That's this coming Friday, being sponsored by Pride Land Comics and Collectibles. This located out on Crawfordsville Road. Because of the timing of sunset, this movie will be at 8 o'clock PM through the year. We've set 6:30, but we've changed to 8 o'clock so that it's darker. Then, the second movie we're showing to this month will be April 25th. We mentioned this one earlier. It'll be sponsored by PRI, Performance Racing Industry. The movie is Ford versus Ferrari. Because of their special open house and event, this one will be shown at 6:30. Hopefully, it could start quick that day, but we are going to start it at 6:30 as originally Speedway Home Helpers has their Spring Volunteer Day event coming up Saturday, April 26th. I believe there is still time to sign up as a volunteer. That information can be found on their Facebook page, along with the town's Facebook page. And the final reminder is just rock it on May, rockin' on Main, May 23rd, Friday, Carb Day, 5 to 10. Save it on your calendar. That'll I have.
All right, thanks, Cheryl. Any questions? All right, thank you. Next is police with Chief Upchurch.
Good evening, council. Just a quick update on our open positions, our two open patrol positions. Currently have three candidates that are in the background phase. Those three candidates have passed the polygraph and the oral interview phase, so hopefully, we'll get at least a couple out of there. So, and in preparation for this year's upcoming racing events, we know some of those events are going to take place before our May Town Council meeting, so we'll just remind those in the community that we have mini marathon, the Indy Grand Prix qualification weekend, Indy 500, parking restrictions, and some roadway restrictions will go in place. So we'll get those to Cheryl, so she can post them on the website. And we, especially the smaller events, not including Indy 500, we always try to work with folks and go up and remind them if they're parked in a restricted area. So we don't like to tow cars if we don't like, if we don't have to, so we'll try to work with them. In a reminder, this is National Telecommunicators Week, Communication Week. We just wanted to thank all of our dispatch personnel for everything that they do. They're kind of the unsung heroes of the police department, and they do a lot for the department and the community, and we just wanted to recognize their efforts. So we're doing that this week. And then, just a couple of quick stats. Through the end of March, we've issued our, we've responded to 6,498 calls for service, and thus far, we've issued 1,400 traffic citations, so.
Well, tell our dispatchers, you know, thank you. They are the lifeline for our officers.
So, we, we have a lot of good folks in there. We appreciate them.
Yep. Any other comments or questions for Chief?
Thank you very much.
Next, Fire, Chief Fishburne.
Well, I'll piggyback on that, since we ended on it. Obviously, the dispatch center is really important to us, too. We work with PD. PD will do some things for them later, but today, the fireside, the Marion County Fire Chiefs actually recognized all the PSAPs. We got Chick-fil-A for both shifts, and, you know, we were able to recognize, because you're right, you know, they keep us safe on runs, they keep us safe on fires, and we do appreciate them. And I know they fall under Chief Upchurch's purview, but they're just as important for us on EMS runs and fire runs, so we really appreciate that. I want to let you know that March 29th, you know, a lot of you guys were down south enjoying your families. We were able to graduate two candidates from the academy. Appreciate Philip coming to issue the oath of office. That went well. They're back in the companies. They were with us because they were already EMTs, but for the final week, they did a lot of family things. They did the life in a day and all of those things, but back on shift, and we're fully staffed. Like police, we are in a hiring process. Even though we don't have openings, we want to keep an active hiring list. We had 24 candidates do the agility test on Saturday. We have not tallied all of that. We expect most of those to move forward to the interview process. So 24 is not as many as we'd like. We had eight no-shows, and we got four emails saying they had accepted positions other places or had just changed their mind about their career path. So appreciate that. We, Chief Milhorne and I also started on two grants. We're hoping those grants, that we can help facilitate some of the five-year capital plan that we're working on with Grant. Grant's kind of tasked us with doing something, you know, in July to kind of start presenting a five-year capital plan for the Fire Department. We're hoping a few of these grants can help with some of that equipment, like a Cascade system for Station 89. Right now, we only have one at Station 88, which is, is fine, you know, guys can come down there, but it would be nice to, and that's, that's the, that's the air that we breathe. It's the system that we're able to fill our air bottles with for, for fires and training and all of those things. So working with Marathon on one of those, and then a federal grant that all of the Marion County departments are working on together, so trying to save us some money. Our run, our runs for March were 311, 41% of that was fire or other, and 59% of that was EMS. I think that's about it. If you don't have any questions.
Any questions for Chief Fishburne?
Just a comment. I've really appreciated the invite to go down there and see the graduation. It's pretty uplifting to see people, early on, young people, that are committing to something larger than themselves, and then to see a kind of a video snapshot of basically the rigorous training that they had to go through. So, thank you for that.
It was actually a collaborative effort that typically, we send our guys to an academy where we just send them. And, you know, we offer to help, but it's with bigger departments. This, this academy, you know, we dedicated, one of our battalion chiefs was, who is an educator and teaches all over the state. He was a part of the education. It was the Town of Greenwood, City of Greenwood, had 20, because they added a station and they, they got a safer grant. Decatur Township had seven, and Town of Speedway had two. But our companies were able to go over to the tower and be a part of that training, and it was a kind of a different collaborative effort for departments, not all having to be a part of Marion County, and it, it really went smooth. And you're right, it was kind of neat. It's kind of neat to see guys that are really happy about their job, and, you know, they, they haven't gotten, you know, jaded yet, and all of those things. So, yeah, I appreciate those comments.
Chief, I just want to say thank you to both the chiefs on the, we're entering the month of May, and it's going to be here shortly, and you guys are already spending a lot of time, extra time, making sure that the town is ready to go. And I just want to say thank you to both of you for spending that time and making sure that we've got the right people trained, we got the right manpower out there, and, because it takes a lot of meetings that you got to go to.
It does, and I know that Chuck and I are out front, and we get a lot of that, and I totally appreciate that. And I know, I know you also know how much work Cheryl and Rob and our, in our waste, our wastewater and our water plant, I mean, especially Carb Day and Race Day, you know, there's a lot that goes on to keep us in compliance in all of those areas, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, next, Parks and Recreation, Tammy Smith. Evening.
Well, it's that time of year, getting ready to start all the summer camp stuff. I'll start off with the swim lessons. We're doing the evaluations on April 30th. Those slots are all full, and we've got the new swim coach at the high school that's on board and is excited about working with us, so we're excited to be able to bring those free swim lessons to the community again. Summer camps start June 2nd, and it's for the four weeks in the month of June. Our first summer concert is scheduled for June 26th, the Jean Markowitz Band. And normally, during summer concerts, we do not have a concert the week of July 4th. However, we are going to have one this year on July 3rd, and I'm real excited about it. The Indiana National Guard 38th Infantry Division Band will be coming and doing a concert for us, and it sounds really cool. It's like a 43-member band, but they have different segments. It'll start off with like their brass quartet, and then their like concert-type band, and then their rock band. So I'm very excited to be able to add them to our summer concert lineup. And then I'm happy to say, after a year and a half of hard work with the Parks Board, the community, everybody, we finally submitted the final draft to DNR for the five-year master plan. So now we're just waiting on that approval, and then we can start, hopefully, applying for the LWCF and moving forward with getting some, hopefully, upgrades done in the parks. That sums it up.
Questions or comments for Tammy?
No, Tammy, I don't think everybody realizes how many hours you guys put in. I mean, that's really, it's unbelievable, especially with all the parks programs. It takes a lot of people to make sure that happens and go be able to pull it off, and you do it, so.
Thank you. It's a lot of fun, I enjoy it.
Yeah, I thought the turnout for the last meeting that you guys had was pretty well-attended. I saw us passing through.
Yeah, very, very good questions, very engaged group of community members. It really did my heart good to see that, to see so many people involved and engaged like that. And some of them actually even are discussing what might be involved in creating like a Friends of Speedway Foundation. A lot of parks departments have those, and their parks are able to thrive better through this 501(c)(3). So I'm trying to help them figure out ways to do that. I attended the Parks luncheon and like conference on Friday downtown, and talked, had some really good networking with some people who do work with all the foundations of other parks departments, and they're going to be sending me a toolkit, and so hopefully, we can, these community members will step up and move forward with that for our parks.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah. Tammy, maybe just some high-level, like what are the things you're most excited about in the five-year plan?
Playgrounds.
New playgrounds, new equipment.
Yeah, I'm stressing about it, to be honest. Dave and I both are. Those playground surfaces are in horrendous condition, and we need to get those upgraded.
Yep, at both parks.
That's my number one.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, it's exciting, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Next, Public Works, Rob.
Good evening, council. We'll start off with wastewater. The plant treated 126 million gallons of water in March. They installed new UV lights, and they're working correctly as they should, painting and return building, getting all their equipment ready for ground maintenance, their mowers and weed eaters and tractors, and they're flushing their nitrification towers at this point. The Water Department treated 62 million gallons of water. They're working on their DNR report they have to do every year for water quality. Distribution crews are out changing out of water meters throughout town and flow testing the wells, and that's getting done by National Water Services. You can see, if you've been down 10th Street, you've seen the crane truck on the levee. They're, they're in the wellhouse doing the flow meters for that. And for the Street Department, yardway started last week. Everybody was happy to see that. Pretty busy there. We're already mowing, trying to get things ready for the month of May, getting Main Street cleaned up and ready for that big month.
Yep.
That's about all I have.
Any comments or questions for Rob?
I had one comment. On Saturday, we had the Solid Waste Boards Annual Cleanup Day, and I heard from multiple people, and then I observed it myself, that the median seemed to be in so much better shape in terms of trash. So kudos to your team and the landscaping crew that we hire as well.
Yeah, well, I mean, we get out as much as we can, but it helps with the, our contractor, Nick Raymond, are out there doing the flower beds and their mulching, so they take care of a lot of it at that point, but it's constant trash everywhere. I mean, we try to run the street sweeper every day that we can, if temperature allows and weather, but I appreciate that. I mean, they do work hard. It's, there's so much trash, you don't carry a bag, you carry a 55-gallon trash can, we get, so that's how it usually works, so.
Any other? All right, thanks, Rob. All right, moving on, item 18, Town Manager Report.
Thank you. I have a couple of items. This Friday, April the 18th, the Municipal Center will be closed for Good Friday in observance of that holiday. It's a town holiday. Just like Philip said, the Solid Waste Board sponsored the cleanup that just happened this past Saturday. I was unable to attend because of a family commitment. I know we had about 20 folks that, that showed up.
12.
Okay, 12. We did get some supplies from Keep Indianapolis Beautiful, so we keep getting that, and I think next year, we maybe need to market and promote that a little bit better, just to continue. I think it's a good thing to have it every single year. The only other comment I had was, on May the 15th, we are planning our public employee appreciation breakfast during the month of May. That'll be, that's a Thursday, I believe, from 7:00 to 9:00 AM. Several of us will cook pancakes, we'll have sausage and bacon. The shift change with police and fire kind of coincide with that. So would love to have council there if you guys have time. I know you're busy, but keep that in mind. That's all I have this evening.
Okay. Any questions for Grant? All right, we'll move on to council reports. Councillor Sarah Gardner.
Yeah, the one item I have tonight was just the grand opening of, or the reopening of the IMS museum. We were able to go, there was a handful of us that were able to go to the ribbon cutting. Again, the rain, say, that was the night of the tornado, so we got really lucky, there was no rain, got to see leadership there speak, and was able to see the museum, and it is incredible. So I was fortunate to take my mother-in-law the next weekend, and, you know, from, I won't give out her age, but older two, young, my children, they loved it. Everyone loved it. The history of it, it's very interactive, and so I think this is definitely something to put on your radar, to take, you know, when we have people coming in for the race, and just to really share how amazing this is in our town, you know, the money they put into it. And so just thankful that I was able to go to that, but bought a membership, and so hopefully, I'll be back. So I'm like, well, it makes sense, you know. So, yeah, so definitely go if you haven't, and like you said, I know a lot of people weren't able to necessarily be able to go to that cleanup day. I know it coincides with spring sports, and I know my schedule's crazy right now with kids, but even if you can't, right, I see people in the parks all the time, like you see the consistent people with a bag grabbing trash, or just be a good neighbor, right? So I think even if you can't go to a specific event, just look out for each other, try to help each other out. I know the storms, we got lucky that night, but there is still some, some limbs down and things like that, so just help each other out. If you see mowing, I know we've talked about that. If our neighbors are struggling, just reach out and, or reach out to us and the town, and I know we're trying to work together, not against each other, so try to help each other out, and we want our town to look nice, and the wind is not helping the trash. So just pick up what you can, help out where you can, and Home Helpers is coming up, too. That's a great way to volunteer your time if you're able, and, yeah, so just keep looking out for things like that, and thanks to all you guys who went through the academy. I know it's a lot of time, and, but yeah, excited for you guys and what's to come, and that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. Councillor Sean Harold.
Just one quick item. I know this past weekend was opening day for Speedway Junior Baseball and Softball, as well as, I believe, the soccer organization as well. And this year, unfortunately, I don't have any children playing soccer, but I'm, I'm hoping that all went well with their opening day, and, and I know baseball... well with their opening day, and I know baseball went off without a hitch, really just wanted to send a big thank you to all of the board members, all of the volunteers, the coaches that make those days happen for our kids. I think it was, the kids had a lot of fun this weekend, and hopefully they'll be off for a good season, so that's all I had today.
All right, thank you, Sean. Councilor Vince Knupfler.
I just want to thank Anthony Ramien for the work that you're doing on the Home Helpers, Speedway Home Help, you make a big impact on a lot of elderly people that can't really take care of their yards and will have projects, it's been doing that year after year after year, and thank you for your time on that. That's all I have for the night.
Thank you, Vince. Vice President Jason Delisle.
Nothing for me tonight.
And it being 8:11, nothing for me this evening, so I will call this meeting adjourned.